And to John and Dory, who have had the pleasure to work with over the years. I am joined this evening by my colleagues who help run this project, Paul Hickey and Robin Daniels. It is our pleasure to present to you tonight a payment under the host community contract that is in place between the town of Abington and LNR's master developer of the Southfield property for seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. That is mitigation, compensation, consistent with the agreement that we have, and also based upon, as one of your colleagues knows well, some of the recent developmental activity that we've been having go on at Southfield. So, we're happy to provide this, and we hope to be able to be providing many more in the not-too-distant future.
We hope so.
So, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everyone.
You leave the check with John.
I will. I think he would tackle me if.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Other public announcements, just to remind everybody, tomorrow is the election for president and post of other positions. Polls are open at the high school from seven o'clock a.m. until eight o'clock p.m. Also, our Veterans Day Parade, our Trittown Veterans Day Parade is on Sunday, which is November 11th, at one o'clock p.m. down Washington Street, so hopefully people can turn out and see a spectacular Veterans Day Parade. And then I think Kevin had an announcement also.
I do, if I could, Mr. Chairman. As I had mentioned at our last meeting, on this coming Saturday, November 10th, at 9:30 at the former Naval Air Station at South Waymouth, we're going to have a ceremony for three young veterans who were killed in action, most recently two from Rockland and one from Waymouth. There'll be a program, color guard units, actually the Edmonton Police and Fire will be participating. We have a Marine General and the Adjutant General of Massachusetts will be speaking, and there will be a flyover to begin the ceremony. So, I would encourage any resident of the town of Abington, it's open to the public, if you would kindly come over to show your support. The veterans who were killed were 20, 21, and 31, certainly too young, you know, from that standpoint, but we would be honored if the people of Abington could come over, show their support, and do homage to our veterans, and our heroes, actually, who gave the ultimate sacrifice. That's this Saturday, November 10th, at 9:30. Thank you.
Anybody else have any announcements? Tom?
Yeah, I just had a couple of shout-outs for the Green Wave Girls soccer team, who defeated the number-one seed Norfolk Aggie, who was undefeated by a score of 2-0. They'll be moving on to the quarterfinal, and also to let residents know that our Green Wave football team is 9-0, and will be competing this Friday night in East Bridgewater for the South Shore League title in a berth in the Super Bowl competition. Again, that would be Friday night, the 9th, at 7:00 p.m. in East Bridgewater.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Oh, sorry. John?
The tricentennial commemorative book will be on sale tomorrow at the voting place at the high school. The commemorative book is $20. It's a great deal. I purchased one myself, and I then ended up giving it to, who was it? A coach.
Walter Pasta.
Walter, yeah. And he still has it, so I'll have to get another book. But, in Abington, they're on sale at Bemis Drug, Abington Public Library, Town Office's Town Clerk, and at the Abington Senior Center. In Rockland, they're on sale at Butterfield's Restaurant, Rockland Town Hall Clerk's Office, and in Whitman, at DeWolff's Pharmacy, Harding Print, and in Whitman Town Hall, Town Clerk's Office. You can actually, I would imagine, be able to request a copy at Abington underscore MA underscore 300 at Verizon.net. And again, the cost of the book is $20, and checks must be made payable to the Abington Tricentennial Committee.
Thank you. Anything else? Dory, you have anything?
Nothing, thank you.
6:30 p.m. under public appointments. Appointment to the zoning board of appeals, and that's Sean Reynolds. Did see Sean somewhere. Hey, Sean?
Yes.
Did you just come up?
How are you? Good.
How are you, sir? All right, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Sean Reynolds. I live at 19 Charles Street in Abington, Massachusetts. I've been a pretty much lifetime resident of Abington. My great-great-grandfather built the home that I'm in presently, and I'd really like to continue service to the town. I just passed the bar exam, been waiting a long time for that, and I've worked with many members of the board here prior to going into law school, and look forward to coming back and helping out as much as possible.
Any questions, anyone? Do we have a motion?
I do. I'm good.
I'll make the motion.
And this is for the alternate position, one of the two alternate positions. It's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You have to get sworn in by the Town Clerk.
Mm-hmm.
I think they actually have a meeting.
I think we'll send an appointment letter.
Okay. They may have a meeting this week, actually, so if you get your appointment letter before, then.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sean.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
6:30 feet, I'm sorry. Bar exam also.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Sean.
Thank you so much.
6:35 p.m. is the fiscal year 2013 tax classification hearing, and Jack Pistorino, I think, is here to make that presentation. Are you Jack, Chairman?
Hello. I'm here tonight with the Board of Assessors.
Let me just read the hearing notice.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Public hearing notice, town of Abington, the Board of Selectmen will hold a joint hearing with the Board of Assessors on the fiscal 2013 tax classification on Monday, November 5th, 2012, at 6:35 p.m. in the Carter Hearing Room, Abington Town Office's, 500 Glenneveitch Way, Abington, Mass. Interested taxpayers may present oral or written information on their views during this hearing. Our Andrew Burbine, Chairman, Board of Selectmen. Thanks. Motion over. I think we're over. Okay.
I'm here tonight with the Board of Assessors, Chairperson Tracy Durvis, Michael Cunningham, and Paul Zakarowski. The following presentation and the supporting documentation and estimated tax rate for fiscal year 13. The recap associated documents, tax rate will receive final certification by the Department of Revenue in December, and the actual tax bills will be mailed out at the end of December. The purpose of the classification hearing? Classification hearing is to be held to decide whether to shift the tax burden amongst our five property classes. This does not change the total levy for this community, it simply determines the share each class is responsible for. What the classification does not do? Classification hearing does not determine the tax rate for the town, does not determine how much money can be raised, a split rate will not increase revenue for the town. The next slide is a little pie chart of our four property classes. Residential is 85.63 percent. Commercial is 11.29 percent. Industrial is 1.20 percent, and personal property is 1.8 percent. Average property values, we have 3,729 single-family parcels. The value of the average single-family home is $287,000 compared to last year at $299,000. We have 203 commercial parcels. The average value for commercial parcel is $860,000 compared to last year at $896,000. If a single tax rate is adopted, the average tax on a single-family home would be $4,765, compared to last year at $4,600. The average tax on a commercial property would be $14,275 compared to last year's tax of $13,766. Value ranges, the value range that most single-family homes fall into is between $200,000 and $300,000, as well as commercial. The highest range for a single-family parcel is between $700,000 and $800,000, which is over 74 percent of the commercial parcels fall in or below this range. Source of revenue for the town, as you know, is local receipts and other revenue consisting of state aid, local receipts, permits, water store charges, fines. Other revenue would be free cash, stabilization fund, potential OVA surplus, and the levy. The levy refers to revenue a community can raise through real estate and personal property taxes. It can be increased due to Proposition 2 and a half, new growth overrides, debt exclusions, or capital exclusions. To calculate, to arrive at the single tax rate, the total levy for the town is divided by the total assessed value for the town. Once a single rate is found, a minimum residential rate and a maximum commercial, industrial, personal property are calculated and used to determine the various splits, which I will have later on in the presentation. This is a comparison screen between fiscal year 12 and 13. 13 is on the left-hand side, 12 is on the right. Estimated FY13 levy is $28,460,000. Our full fair cash value for the town is $1,691,617,000. And our estimated tax rate for fiscal year 13 would be $16,58,000 compared to last year, fiscal year 12, at $15,36,000. This also gives a little breakdown of the full and fair cash value for each class, a percentage of the share as well, and the percentage and change in valuations. The LA 7 shift, per the Department of Revenue, any adjusted tax burden on the commercial, industrial, personal property may not rise above 150 percent of their original tax burden. At the maximum allowable shift, the percentage of the levy to be borne by the commercial, industrial, personal property would be 21.54 percent. This would leave 78.45 percent for residential class. This is a little historical slide for our fiscal year 2013 assessed values per class. As you can see, throughout the years, if you look at the residential percentage and commercial, industrial, personal property percentages, which are the last three, the last two and three columns down the end there, they really haven't changed throughout the years. In 2000, residential was 85.6, and 2013, it's 85.6 as well. So, there really isn't too much change there. The next slide is actually the impact of the shift. Should the Selectmen decide to shift the burden of taxation from residential to commercial properties, the tax rate would shift as follows. I'll do a 5 percent shift. The residential tax would be $4,725, which the rate, the tax rate would be $16,44,000, and that's a savings of $40.24 for residential. Compared to commercial, which would be $14,989 taxes, the tax rate would be $17,41,000, which would be an increase of $714 for a 5 percent split. For a 25 percent split, the tax rate for residential would be $15,88,000, and the residential savings would be a little over $200 compared to a commercial rate of $20.72, it would be an increase in taxes of $3,564. In the maximum shift, the tax rate for residential would be $15,900,000, a savings of $400,000. Commercial tax rate would be $24,87,000, and that would increase the taxes by $7,137,000. Basically, the highest shift would result in commercial paying 50 percent more in taxes, while residential parcels would save slightly more than 8 percent. This is basically a visual pie chart showing what we just explained, just for a visual. In closing, the Board of Assessors voted at their meeting to recommend that the Board of Selectmen adopt a single tax rate. Questions, concerns?
Questions? Tom? Go ahead.
Jack, I'm just curious, on slide five, property values, again, this year have decreased from, you know, I guess the average single-family from $299,480 to $287,438. And I guess, do you know, like, how many years in a row have we seen declining property values in Abington?
Last year, they were stable for residential property.
Okay.
But prior years, they have been declining. Percentage, I don't have with me, but they have.
Any sort of an opinion on, is it more economic-related?
On where values will be going?
Well, no. I mean, last year, they were stable.
Yes, they were.
And this year, they're down $12,000.
Right, about 4 percent.
Yeah.
And your question? I'm sorry.
I just wondering why. Not from a Board of Assessors viewpoint, I know, you know, it's mechanic, but what's happening?
Well, it's the economy.
What do you think?
That's a wide-open question, really, but it is the economy still. And again, we get our values from the last full calendar year, so all our values are based on calendar year 2011 for fiscal year 13. So, we're about a year and a half behind, per the Department of Revenue.
Right. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. Sort of the same thing Tom asked. Personal property value went down.
15 percent.
15 percent. Is that because people hold on to their cars longer?
Personal property is not cars.
Okay.
It went down quite a bit because, basically, utilities, and the depreciation on personal property utilities is governed by the state, so we had to follow their depreciation table, and it has gone down. That's basically where that goes.
And my other question is, and I know I asked the same question last year, to even think about a split tax rate, do the assessors look at business to be at least 20 percent of, or?
Well, that's a very, that's a vague answer, 20 percent to 30 percent, but most communities that do adopt a split tax rate, they're on the 30 percent mark. But it does vary, yeah, it does vary.
I realize every time, it does a difference. We're only at under 15 percent for, so, okay.
Yes, we're 11.2 percent, 11.3 percent.
Okay. Anything else? Any from, anybody from the folks present, if they want to come up and ask a question or make a statement, they're welcome to. If not, you can have them.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we adopt a residential factor of one.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anxious? Thank you. Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. 6:40 p.m. Approval of common vicular license, 171 Brockton Avenue, tastefully done.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I recuse myself for this.
The applicant is Diane Manley. Nice. Craig, you're here to stand in for Diane, okay? If you can just come up, please. Just identify yourself.
I'm Craig Coyle, 67 Elm Street.
And your position at the?
I am the chef, owner chef.
You're looking to open up the restaurant's hours, 8 a.m. to 10 p.m. Monday through Friday?
Yes. Actually, Saturday also, we're getting requests for that, so.
So, it's going to be same hours on Saturday?
Yep.
8 a.m. to 10 p.m. Monday through Saturday. Close Sunday?
Yes.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to disclose that this item was supposed to come before the board at our canceled town meeting, which was the night that we were to meet, and approve this, which was prior to their grand opening. So, being faced with canceling the grand opening after it was advertised, we, I made a decision to allow it to go forward, to open, and then to come back and get the common vic license. So, I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of that.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Make a motion that we grant the common vicular license for Monday through Saturday, 8 a.m. to 10 p.m., and make it effective date of October 29th.
In a second. Any questions? Discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any questions? Good luck.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
6:45 p.m. Approval of Class II license, J&amp;G Performance, 43 Highland Road. It's a public hearing, town of Abington, public hearing. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 5th, 2012, at 6:45 p.m. in the Carter Hearing Room, 500 Glenneveitch Way, on the application of John Brown for Class II license, doing business as J&amp;G Performance, 43 Highland Road, Units C and D. Our Andrew Burbine, Chairman.
How you doing?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to call it out.
First question I had, Mr. Brown, did you notify the abutters? Because I had noticed today that the abutters hadn't.
I did. I actually have that list with me as well, with the green cards. Yes, you want to see it?
Provide it to the.
You also have the listing of?
Yes, I do. It's on the second page.
There's only two abutters? 77 Highland and 349 Adams?
That's the list I was.
Certified, yeah, certified by the Board of Assessors. And the properties on Harvard, are they not, are they vacant, and they just appear as combined parcels? Is that it? In back of the building? Is there, are there?
There's nobody living in the back of the building.
Okay.
To my knowledge.
Okay.
It would be.
They, I, from what we have here.
Mr. Zakarowski, go ahead.
They appear to be.
Paul Zakarowski, assessing, to the best of my knowledge, I believe that's all vacant land.
Okay. And William Van Bandwith is here tonight, and David and Rosa Chu. Are Chu.
And it was advertised.
And it was advertised. The dated delivery was 10/19 to, and October 22nd. For David and Rosa Chu. And they're in Milton.
Okay, Mr. Brown, just explain what you're looking for and what your operation entails.
Right now, we're currently just doing commercial garage license, and we're looking to actually sell motorcycles on the premises as well. I did have the building inspectors come down and look at everything. Basically it.
You have 23 bikes that you're looking to sell, correct?
Are you going to do cars as well?
Not going to sell cars, no.
Okay, but it says, maybe I'm wrong here, it says 20 bikes and six cars.
That's for the commercial garage license. How many were actually licensed to have on premises for repair?
Oh, I see.
So, we can have nine cars in for repair, up to 40 motorcycles for repair, and then I think he said 20 to 23 for sale, and that was the max allowed at one point on premises.
Hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 9 to 6, and Saturday, 9 to 5. Is that any change from what you have now?
That's currently the same.
How about down the bottom of your application, neither one is checked as far as either a sole proprietor or an employer. Do you have employees?
We do not have employees. Right now, it's a partnership.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I can't determine, based on the paperwork here. Did the building inspector sign off on this?
It's.
Okay. I don't have that in mind. We're in the process of developing a point everyone will have.
If you look into it, after the map, you'll see at the bottom of the page, okay, from the building inspector. It's his signature.
Okay, as long as he's approved.
Yes.
And also, I think, you'd see approval from Fire Rescue, Ed Belcher, Deputy Chief.
And the police department.
And the police department. For whatever reason, that didn't make mine, that's all. Okay.
I have two.
No, that's okay.
Anybody from the, anybody else up here, any questions at this point? Okay. Anybody from the audience have any questions?
Yeah, well, 111 Highland Road, and I am an abutty and was not notified. The second thing, I would like some clarity around what this license is for in consideration of that's what they've already doing and have been doing since they came before you before. I've not seen any vehicles in there, all I've seen is motorcycles. And they've been on display in the parking lot since he opened. Whether or not he has permission to do so, I don't know. I would put that to you folks. The other thing I just want assurances for is that they will adhere to their hours of operations because they have not done so. And those of you that were on the board at the time received emails from me questioning it, and I never got a response. So, are we just legitimizing what has already been happening? And I have concerns if there are going to be allowances made for additional motorcycles that are already riding around in that empty space and up and behind the building and down-havering around as they test them.
Now, you said you're an abutty.
I am an abutty, and if you look at all of the communications that have come out from Mr. DeAndrea, I've always received notification. So, my land does abut, 43 Highland Road. Thank you.
If I could.
Oh, sure.
How long, how long, in your opinion, have they been operating?
March of 2011. I have all the documentation when they came before you before.
Is this a new license at that location, or?
In March of 2011 was your commercial garage license, correct?
Yes, we've been working on motorcycles and automotive since March of 2011. We have not done any sales whatsoever.
So, can I just ask what the display is there in your parking lot every day?
We push out all the customers' motorcycles every day so that we have the working space to actually work on the motorcycles and to draw attention to what we're actually doing.
They never seem to go down, though. It always seems to be the same number of vehicles.
Can you direct it through me?
Okay, I'm sorry. There always seems to be the same number of motorcycles with that flag out there, which is typically what they put when they're selling things.
Have you, Mr. Brown, have you been selling any motorcycles?
I have not sold any motorcycles.
Advertising for selling?
I have not been advertising for selling either.
I'm sure it could be easily found out whether or not there were any sold from that property. My only concern is when they came before you in March of 2011, they came with the pretense that they were there to do automotive work. I've not seen any, I'm not going to say that you haven't done any work in any cars, but I haven't seen any. The majority of the work that's been going on in there has been with motorcycles, not with cars. And I also have the concerns where they don't always adhere to their hours. They've, I've dried out my barrels at 7:00 in the morning and have them pulling out motorcycles into the parking lot at 7:00 in the morning.
That's completely false.
It's not. I have the documentation. I sent it to the Board of. I sent it to the Board of Selectmen.
Through me, please. You'll get the chance, Mr. Brown. Okay, anybody else have any questions?
I just have one question.
Yeah.
One of the pieces of papers says twenty-three bikes, and then one says twenty bikes. I'm just not sure how many bikes they're talking about. Inspection or services.
When Marshall had left, he told me twenty motorcycles is what he was going to approve. I don't know what the final documentation said.
So you'll buy for twenty-three, and he approved twenty?
He's recommending twenty.
That's what he, he verbally had told me, twenty, when he left.
I have been at Mrs. Welch's house before and observed work being done after hours on vehicles. This property has been an issue for not many years. And I know there was some problems with the owner having to put a dumpster out in a certain area and put a fence up. Does that work ever been completed or properly completed? Do we know?
There is a fence up.
And it's not really your problem so much as it was.
And there are, we're not the only business in that premises, and I know the detail shop works all hours of the day. That's two days now for us.
And you're right, and I'm sorry to say that the day I was there was your property that they were working on.
Yeah, I mean-
No, I will vouch for what he's saying. However, Mr. Adams has told me repeatedly that the auto detailing are unregulated, unregulated business, and they can do whatever they want, which does not sound right. He was going to research through the state, unregulated businesses. They're there till midnight. I mean, the people that do-
Not these folks.
No, 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 not him. Auto detailing, they-
I'll admit that we've definitely had a few late nights that will happen with any business, but I don't think that we're conducting it. We leave well before eight o'clock, and that's on the latest, latest night that we stay there. And all the equipment's off, we tie up some loose ends, have business meetings, that type of stuff. But it's definitely not something we do on a daily basis. And I try to be-
And I agree with that, but the problem we have is when it's, when it's a situation that has a neighborhood up in arms, which somewhat is, again, it's not so much your fault. And I understand sometimes that happens. But when it goes over the listed hours of operation, it has a tendency to create problems.
Right, and I can tell you that I've never opened up the business at seven o'clock in the morning. I usually get there between eight and eight-thirty. I do start to push out motorcycles so that we're ready to start business at nine o'clock. But we're not, we're not running our operation all hours of the night, and it's not something that happens on a regular basis. Every time we prom, you know, we will promise customers that we're going to get a vehicle back to them.
I do have a tendency when I go by, they'll look in. I have, just to be on the record.
Absolutely. I wouldn't deny that we've never stayed late since we've been open, but it's not something that happens on a regular basis.
And again, on the dumpster and the fence, do we know that those issues have been rectified?
I, I, I know that we have had the building inspector out on a number of issues, some of which were abutty complaints. And we are currently in court, we, with the owner of the property with regard to enforcement of some of the bylaws of the town. That process is obviously too slow in some respects for some of the residents who bought the property. But to answer your question about the dumpster specifically, I am, I'm not clear on that. I can find out and get back to you as to whether or not the dumpster is properly enclosed. There was some discussion as to whether or not the dumpster should be moved or should have been moved entirely to a different location. I'm not quite sure if that has happened. I can have the building inspector go back out and inspect specifically for the dumpster and give us a report, which I will forward to you.
And just the other question, you currently have a license for X amount of automobiles. Would that still be, would this be in conjunction with that, the automobiles and the motorcycles are?
I don't think he has anything for sale as far as automobiles are concerned. I think it's a commercial license for repair of automobiles, and I think motorbikes.
And how many automobiles is that on the property?
The repair license.
I don't have that license here.
I don't, off the top of my head, I'm not, I'm not sure. I know what it is.
He should, he should know.
It's on my, it's actually on the license.
Right.
Right.
My fear is if you've got like twenty vehicles now, and you're going to allow, you know, twenty-three motorcycles.
Well, that's a good point, yeah.
If I could, what are the, in terms of court, what, for the owner of the property, what are we in court with him on now?
On the use of Harvard Street, which is really a paper street, and each of the abutters owned to the middle of the street. And I think that that is the big issue from our perspective, is that there should not be the type of access on Harvard Street that currently exists.
On Highland Street?
I, no, no Harvard, it's a paper street.
And behind it?
It's behind the shop, and it kinda is a buffer to the residential neighbors, to the back of the property, as you go up Highland.
And he's using it, is he overextending?
He's actually paved it.
Yeah.
And never went, never got approval from the planning board.
Yeah, this thing has a history going back to the mid-eighties. And I know when I was on the board before, we had a intense fight with Mr. DeAndrade, and he appeared on numerous occasions. And at that point in time, at least the board took the position, from what I recall, on a couple of occasions that, in, nothing reflective of the individual before us, but I think it goes to the overall appearance of the building in terms of is it, is the operation there conducive to the public safety? And I guess what I'm hearing is that if, if it is a detriment to the public safety, that goes to the owner. Now, if we currently have litigation pending as a result of him using a paper street, I guess I don't feel comfortable right now. I would be inclined to want to know more about that as to how it relates to the overall property. And this has been, honestly, this, when that building was approved way back when, and I'm talking probably 1980, to go in there, it was a fight then. It's been a continual fight on and off since that period of time. And this is just a continuation of that. And I think from my perspective, I would, in fairness to the applicant, I think I would want to continue the hearing until such time as I've got more information as to where we stand as it relates to the suit and how it may or may not impact his application. Because I know at one point in time, the tack we took was that Mr. DeAndrade was not paying attention to the town, and therefore, the only way the town to get his attention was to deny applications for that business. And if we had to fight it in court, then so be it. But it was the only way to bring him to the table. And I think we're going right down, back down that road again. And I think I would be in favor of continuing this to a date certain until at least I've been given more information as to where it stands in court and what are those specifics as it relates to the overall property.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's, that's a fair approach. I will say that the, if the bikes are being tested on the street in the back, obviously, that adds more to the case and burden with regard to the proper use of that paper street, which I'm sure there are other residents who bought that property that would also be able to speak more directly in that regard.
Information I think I would like to see. I think Mike brought that up as far as what the commercial garage license entails.
Okay.
How many cars have been allowed under the commercial garage license? And, and maybe, you know, just if you can do a quick research to just make sure that Ms. Welch thinks she's an abutty, I don't know, I guess the assessors don't, if they could take a look at that and see if she isn't that.
I believe when we went for our commercial garage license, we did send her something in the mail.
As notified then. And can I just make a point? I'm not here to try to not allow Mr. Brown to do his business. All I care about is my peace of mind and that the early opening and late closing and the motorcycle racing around, that stuff's got to stop. It's not fair, and the neighbors shouldn't be put in a position where they have to approach them. And, you know, I want him to be a good neighbor, and I want to be a good neighbor to him. But I see things happen that shouldn't happen, and nobody is accountable for it.
I'd just like to say something. Since that paper road, supposedly, when we moved in, Vinny had told us that he won a court case against the Town of Abington, and that it was settled that, that we could use the paper road. Well, I guess they actually put a cease and assist on that paper road. I want to say-
That's what we did.
About four months ago.
Oh, longer than that, yeah.
I'm not sure exactly.
He's appealed that.
But since that time, I haven't used that paper road to test the off-road motorcycles that we have in there. The street motorcycles all get tested on the road, they have a plate. The off-road motorcycles get tested in the parking lot area, so.
I think sometimes you guys go a little bit above and beyond with the racing around the parking lot.
Did you have a, did you have a comment, sir?
And you really shouldn't be going up the street.
Come up, please, if you'd like to make a comment.
Okay. I'm done.
Thank you.
And I've, I've also told everybody that if they do have, if, for instance, he came over at one point, said his mother was very sick, we will be in loud. I gave him a business card. I want to work with everybody, and I understand people are going to get sick. There's going to be certain times during the day that we are running louder vehicles, just to give us a call, and, and we'll quiet it down until, you know, the next day or until it works for everybody. And I've been, I'm trying to run my business and make money and trying to please everybody. And I think I get a lot of the backlash between them and what's happening with the landowner and not necessarily my business, so.
How, anytime you have a neighborhood in the commercial enterprise that close, it's going to be suspicious. Right, sir?
William Wong Bandit, seventy-seven Highland Road, Abington. So I'm not new here. As you can see, I have complained and fight, tried to fight to keep my privacy and tried to make peace with my neighbor. And you can see that I have beautiful neighbor, you know, seven neighborhoods, except the commercial that gave me a lot of hard time. I agree with Ann on, on Mr. Brown and, Mr. Brown, Mr. McPhail.
Is that you?
This is Mr. Brown. No, I'm Mr. Brown.
How about this person?
I'm not sure who that is.
Okay. See, I have no problem, as he mentioned, that one day, see, I have eighty-two years old mom, very ill, and I've been, I moved from that, that room that I gave it to her because I worked there. I couldn't work there because of noise from, from the owner, the owner of forty-three Highland Road. And Mr. Brown came last year, and I, I opened a green light to him as long as he follow the board, because the board gave him the instruction of this town is have, have rule and by law they have to be peacefully and quiet. And suddenly, I, you know, a couple of months later, I saw dirt bike right on Harvard Street. And I, you know, I approached, I approached him politely, you know, like asked him because I never want to step on, on the property of forty-three Highland Road. So I asked him, come over to the corner of Harvard Street. I said, please, stop doing testing, dirt bike, and, and the car, very loud, one of the car, what kind of car that?
It was a Mustang.
Yeah, it's, it's so loud, it's not like normal car, it's a racing car. And I, my question to him is, was, don't you guy like when you repair car? I remember when I repaired my car, I take it to the garage and they repair inside, not outside. But here, you're talking about testing outside. And motorcycle is like dragging, and my wife, in fact, we about to have dinner, suddenly, we have motorcycle dirt bike. It's not motorcycle, it's dirt bike, you know, very loud and spinning around Harvard Street. And, and after I talked to him, then he, maybe some misunderstanding between his friend or other guy right on and, you know, kind of separate and-
Can I interrupt you? Has that stopped? I mean, according to him, that he's discontinued that?
It continues a couple more times.
But recently, has it, he's telling us it's been discontinued, so if that's-
It's not right away. Because I have picture took, took, I took the picture and, because I want to make clear with Mr. Brown that, you know, I, I never against somebody who want, who want to do business, you know, make a living, I respect that. As a climate engineer too, behind his garage, that have been using those paper road, I also, you know, email him, no, I faxed over to him, you know, politely said, hey, I respect your business and that will stop you guy, but you guy have violate the town by law that, you know, cease and desist on, on the Harvard Street. I like, you know, you stop doing that. So that's, that's have been clear. My question is this. I have been walking up by Mr. DeAndrea, five-thirty in the morning. This week alone is three time because he running the limousine. And then I find out from a-
Running a limousine?
From the website, this is Mr. DeAndrea's business.
That's, that's separate apart from what we're talking about tonight. If that's, I would say if you have a complaint regarding that, I would ask you to contact the Town Manager's Office and maybe look into that. Okay? Tonight, we're talking about Mr. Brown's application-
Okay.
-for twenty-three bikes to be sold.
I just brought it up for the reason of-
And I'll forward this on to him, and then he can take a look at it for you and be interested.
Yeah, so as long as Mr. Brown respect whatever, you know, they give you on, on the rule, last time, I don't know what's in there. And, you know, he, he has to follow whatever agreement from last, last meeting.
Great, thank you.
Then I have no problem.
All right, great, thank you. Now, he'll take a look at this for you, too. Does anybody else have any input, any questions? We have a motion to close the hearing. Do you have anything else you want to say before?
Yeah, I just wanted to say once again that I'm, I'm trying to work with all the neighbors, and if, you know, they ever have any issues, they can come talk to us or call us on the phone if we're being too loud. Some of the vehicles that we do run in there, I realize are loud, and I'm trying to make this work for everybody. And I don't think that I've opened my store up very early, you know, and I don't think I've stayed there very late to actually cause somebody to come in here and complain about it. I know I have done it a few times. Like I said, I've stayed late, but the way you made it sound was that it happens on a daily basis, and that's, it's not true, so.
Thank you.
Just, just a thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown reflects on you, some of the previous problems that come back, because I do look at your property and do-
I think we had through this a little bit when you first-
I realized it as soon as the first meeting came.
And I understand, and working on the vehicles, that you are going to have to road test them. And it appears to me in the conversation you've had with the neighbors, you have tried to, you know, within reason, and I appreciate that. However, I would just echo Kevin's concerns and would like to continue the hearing if possible and find out how many vehicles, how many automobiles, how many motorcycles. And if at all possible, we, I'm confused because usually we get a plot plan, and this is a plot plan, and it shows this particular business, but there's a bunch of businesses up there. And I don't know if they're assigned parking spaces or not, but, you know, it just, it just, I don't know if it's possible to find out what other businesses are there, how many, how many parking spots are allotted to them.
It does show our actual lot.
It shows yours, yes, but it doesn't show like on the upper level or down around the side. And once we got that information, I certainly would look forward to moving.
Your date, sir?
Yeah, we have town, special town meeting on November fourteenth, so not to belabor it so we can get more information. I'll move, we continue the hearing until Wednesday, November fourteenth, at six PM at Abington High School. We have town meeting that night, and that way-
And you're welcome to come back?
Yeah, and we'll have, at that point, have more information, and we can then make a decision at that point.
One question, you did mention also the current court case, that that could affect us as well?
I don't know, I'm just-
I think Kevin wants more information for his own.
Okay.
Yeah, it may have no bearing on it, I don't know. I think what, what I want to do is get that information and then have counsel look at it to make a determination from there. And it may very well be that, you know, it has no bearing, I have no idea.
Okay. Okay. No, I just wanted to make sure that if we were waiting to hear to that court case is settled.
No.
Then should we wait longer or whatever?
We'll hopefully make a determination on the fourteenth.
Excellent.
Can be a long.
Thank you. Thank you for your.
Not a problem.
Again, the neighbors are welcome to come on the fourteenth also.
I'd like to mention a couple more, not regard to Mr. Brown. Extend to the chairman talking about the dumpster. Can I go up there?
Well, this is just having to do with Mr. Brown's business at this point in time. Again, if you have those concerns, I would urge you to contact the town manager's office.
Yeah, I have a lot of problem with those thing that.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Thank you. What was that date again?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, six P.M.
Six o'clock at the high school.
Got it.
There's a motion and there's a second. Is there any discussion?
Do you want the hearing first?
Oh, okay. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, yes, have.
Six fifty P.M., appointment to Personnel Bylaw Review Committee, William Adamsick.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address on that issue if I could. There's some serious concerns about what you're doing right now.
I'm not sure that's.
Well, you don't have an appointment to the Personnel Bylaw Review Committee. Appointment to Personnel Board, if I may.
Briefly, Henry. This is an advisory committee to the town manager. It's not really anything to do with.
But if you recall, Henry DeCarlo, one eighty-seven Central Street, you recall I was here and we talked about the Personnel Bylaw? Yes. And in the Personnel Bylaw, as it was approved the second round, because it was submitted incorrectly the first round and poorly crafted and thanks to your help, Mr. Chairman, we got it approved and passed at town meeting back in April. In section two point four of the Personnel Bylaw, there was a section called the Personnel Board. Personnel Board shall consist of three people. One to be appointed by the town manager for a three-year staggered term. One to be appointed by the selectman for a three-year staggered term. And one to be appointed jointly by the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager for a three-year term. Town manager will serve as a member of the board, non-voting capacity, and should serve as ex officio chairman. On the effective date of this bylaw, the initial appointment by the Board of Selectmen will be for one year. And the initial appointment by the Town Manager will be for two years. And the jointly appointed position should be for three years. Personnel Board shall advise the Town Manager as to the classification salary plan. However, the Town Manager shall administer the classification salary plan. So by my reading of this and by what we passed at town meeting, you should be appointing to a Personnel Board as specified in the Personnel Bylaw. Well, that's not what you posted for.
Okay. Do you want to repost it because we're?
No, I'm not asking you to do that. I am in favor.
Well, I'm not asking you. I'm asking these folks if they want to.
But, you know, I am in favor of this and I'm actually, I think Mr. Adamsick is an excellent appointee for it. But I think we need to be appointing to the board that was approved by town meeting.
Again, I think that's what we are doing. The fact that it was misnamed here, I don't think is detrimental.
I think even the applications were posted for that. We've already reviewed the Personnel Bylaw. And by the way, the Personnel Bylaw was not put up on the town website, so I had to go back and find a draft copy. I think I have the language exactly correct.
There is an appointment by the Board of Selectmen, which I was taking to mean this. If others weren't, that's fine. If you want to.
But I believe, I believe the appointment is to a Personnel Board, yes. Not a Bylaw Review Committee because we're not reviewing the bylaw.
Right, I agree.
We've done that.
Yes, 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 yes.
Several times.
Yes, we have, yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Would you accept the motion to change it to Personnel Board?
Well, again, I think the intent was, when the posting was made, was it not to be the Personnel Board?
Personnel Board, yes.
And Mr. Adamsick, are you aware of that, what your appointment is to, the Personnel Board? Okay, so if every, if the five of us are comfortable with that, I think we can go forward.
True.
Okay. Bill, do you want to come up then?
Bill Adamsick, three fifty-one Ashland Street. I guess, I'm not totally sure what.
Just give a brief.
Okay.
Your interest in.
Sure, I've served as a member of the Board of Library Trustees here in town for about the past five years. I've been pretty active at town meetings and other civic events. I have a background as a municipal employee, so I'll be able to bring that experience in a number of different municipalities throughout the state, working with a union, working in a union. So I would be able to bring that kind of an experience to a Personnel Board here in the town of Abington.
Mr. Chairman, just another added, we had also checked with counsel to make sure that Mr. Adamsick can serve on both the Library Board of Trustees as well as this.
Personnel Board.
Personnel Board.
Well, it's a good catch, Henry, by the way.
And he can, because there's no restriction as to the committees you can serve on under the charter.
Any questions?
So I just want to make sure we're talking about the Personnel Board, even though, Bill, you wrote Personnel Bylaw Committee, but it's actually Personnel.
Well, actually, I think my original application, which was over a year and a half ago, was to be on the Bylaw Review Committee. But that has since come and gone and I've had communications with the town manager since then of my continued interest at this point to be on the Personnel Committee since the Bylaw Committee has already come and gone, right?
Tom?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. Are the other two positions filled on this Personnel Board? And you get to appoint one? Who gets to appoint the other?
It's a joint appointment with the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager.
Okay. So Bill will be the first appointee?
He'll be the one-year appointment, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Are we still advertising? Do you have people that have applied?
Well, no, actually, I had advertised it, I think for about twenty-five days. You were the only one to have applied at that point. So I'm going to re-advertise it, but I do believe that the initial advertisement on the website was for the Personnel Board. I don't think it was.
I think it was for Personnel Board this time around, yeah.
So that being said, is this a joint one? Are you in favor of this one or do you want this to be the board's one?
No, you can.
No, this would be, I think this would be the board. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We appoint William Adamsick to the Personnel Board.
Second. For a one-year term, huh?
Whatever's delineated.
And there is a second and a discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
For your service.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we get the Personnel Bylaw on the town website?
We can certainly try, Henry. I'll, you can request that it be put up on the town website. I thought it was up there at one point. I don't know. Okay. Next is the action discussion items, vote on the reappointment of the town manager. This is going to be a discussion amongst us, not anybody in the audience. We're not going to take any public input. It's not a public hearing. It's not a public forum. So this will be a discussion amongst the five board members and then a vote will be made on whether or not to reappoint the town manager.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to hear, I know Attorney Hodnett is here and he gave us an opinion as to what our options are and what the meaning of the statute is and I wonder if we could prevail upon him. I had a couple of questions. I don't know if it pleases the board, whether you wish to have him go over what our options are. I mean, clearly, they've been placed in writing, but I, if everybody's comfortable with his written response, I do have a couple of questions in terms of terms, so.
Paul, can you come up if you don't mind? Yeah, if you have questions, Kevin, why don't we do it that way?
Attorney Hodnett, in your opinion to us, you indicated that in the current contract between the town and the town manager, there were several functions or reasons, if you will, that if the board chose not to reappoint, I guess if it was simply a non-reappointment, then the severance clause would kick in.
That's correct.
However, if there were reasons given to not reappoint, and you listed out several of them that are in the agreement, could you kind of go over that with us and give us the definitions of each of those if you may?
Yes. Under the current contract between the board and the town manager, the contract expires in April. You have to give notice a hundred and twenty days prior to that time if the board decides not to reappoint the town manager. If you decide to not reappoint the town manager and do not assign a reason pursuant to the terms of the contract, he would be entitled to ninety days severance. There are seven reasons listed in the current agreement. If there is a reason and there is a consensus among the board for one of those seven reasons as the reason that you decide as a board not to reappoint, even though he's ready and willing and able to serve at the conclusion of the contract, he would not be entitled to severance. Those reasons are the following. You would have to have evidence or, I would assume, evidence and a vote that the town manager engaged in illegal acts involving personal gain to himself. He engaged in malfeasance. Malfeasance is an illegal action or an inappropriate action by the town manager. Misfeasance would be the wrongful performance of an act that he was required to perform. Non-feasance is the omission of an act or the failure to perform an act that he should have performed. A violation of the town charter, unauthorized exercise or responsibility and authority of the Board of Selectmen, and any actions in direct contradiction with the express policies of the board. If you, as a consensus of the board, believe that there is evidence to support one of those reasons, if you in fact decide not to reappoint, you should make that part of your decision not to reappoint. And if you do that, he at that point would not be entitled to his ninety-day severance.
Okay, further to the question of non-feasance, when you say failure to act, failure to act in accordance with the contract or failure to act in a general term by not?
It would, it could be either. It could be failure to act under the town charter, failure to act in the responsibility as the town manager in general. There are certain responsibilities set out in his contract if he failed to comply with those responsibilities. To the extent that you believe there is a failure to act or a non-feasance, I would suggest in the anticipation that there may be litigation over the failure to pay the severance. If you believe there is a non-feasance or a failure to act, the board should identify that so that it is clear what the board is acting on if the matter is then subsequently litigated.
If I could, one step further, if the question comes on renewal and renewal should prevail, a non-renewal should prevail, could then we take a discussion on the separate question of whether we want to assign a reason for it? Or should it be accompanied in the original motion?
I believe it should be accompanied in the same motion. If it's going to be, if you're going to assign a reason, but you don't need a reason not to reappoint. You could simply decide as a board not to reappoint and that vote would trigger the non-reappointment and at the same time, trigger the obligation to have to pay the ninety-day severance.
So then the question would become if, again, on that point, if there was a reason assigned and if the reason assigned was litigated, the town's exposure would be assumably just the question of the severance?
Yes.
Thank you. I have my questions or answers.
Any other questions of Attorney Hodnett?
Well, I guess my only question for people, okay, I know there was some question about reappointing for three years and my takeaway was the way we put together our constitution, which we call our charter. The appointment has to be made for three years.
For a three-year period.
The key word there, which was interesting to me, is shall, which you could substitute for must. And again, my takeaway was that if you look at a town like Groton, I think they set up their charter that appoint the town manager for no more than three years, which would give the board the option to appoint for something less. But am I correct in saying that our only option on a reappoint is for another three years?
Yes, that was the, that's my interpretation of the charter. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Attorney Hodnett? Thank you very much for your assistance. Comments, questions? I'll start if you want.
Yeah.
I did prepare a statement because I've put a lot of thought into this, believe me. I've had input from a lot of people. I've talked to a lot of people throughout the town. People have contacted me to discuss whether or not the town manager should be reappointed, so this is my opinion at least. I believe the town manager should be reappointed as it is in the overall best interests of the town of Abington and its residents. A little less than three years ago, after a very thorough and comprehensive search process, the Town Manager Search Committee presented the Board of Selectmen with a list of four finalists for the position of town manager. Those four finalists were interviewed by the board at a public meeting and the board selected Charles Aspenwall for the position. Mr. Aspenwall declined the appointment. The board then selected John D'Agostino for the position. Mr. D'Agostino accepted the position for a three-year appointment as provided in Abington's town charter. He began serving the town in April of two thousand and ten and he has accomplished, in my opinion, a great deal in the two and a half years he has been serving the town. Mr. D'Agostino began his tenure right around the time of our annual town meeting in two thousand and eleven. At that time, we were faced with an extremely difficult fiscal situation, having had to cut our operating budget by approximately one million dollars in the middle of the fiscal year. Mr. D'Agostino immediately immersed himself in attempting to right the dire fiscal situation of the town. One of his first accomplishments was in working with the superintendent of schools to prevent the closing of the Frollo School. Mr. D'Agostino has continued to have a very cooperative and collaborative relationship with the school department, something that was nonexistent prior to Mr. D'Agostino's appointment. Mr. D'Agostino has many other accomplishments that I believe warrant his reappointment. The town stabilization fund pending the special town meeting on November fourteenth will contain over one million dollars. When Mr. D'Agostino arrived here two and a half years ago, the balance in the account was around one thousand dollars. Due in large part to Mr. D'Agostino's budget expertise, we have been able to increase this fund, which helps our town's bond rating. Mr. D'Agostino appointed a new fire chief, a new town accountant and a full-time building inspector. Actually, something which I was opposed to, but he was able to prevail on the other members of the board to push that through. He's appointed a council on aging director also. He worked extremely hard in negotiating a new trash contract and as a result implemented a new trash program that will save the town hundreds of thousands of dollars over the term of the contract. The program has also improved the overall appearance of the town. Due to Mr. D'Agostino's leadership on the budget, restorations have been made to the Park and Recreation Department, the Fire Department, the Highway Department, and the Council on Aging, among others. When Mr. D'Agostino began his tenure, the senior center was on life support, surviving only through private donations and funding through nonprofit groups. The town is now providing the funding for the building, which, in my opinion, is its obligation as the building is a town building. When Mr. D'Agostino began his tenure, the Park and Recreation Department was also being funded through user fees and donations and the maintenance of town-owned fields was at risk. Through Mr. D'Agostino's work, the maintenance of the town-owned fields has been rolled into the Highway Department and additional personnel have been hired to assist with the field maintenance. These are the initial steps towards what will hopefully be a Department of Public Works in the future. Mr. D'Agostino has overseen the drafting of a new Personnel Bylaw. He was instrumental in helping to retain one of Abington's biggest employers and longest-running businesses in town by working on rezoning and a TIF agreement with the business. He helped to obtain a community block grant in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars to help renovations to homes of homeowners who are able to get the grant and also which helps fund Abington's food pantry. He has worked with the Griffins Dairy Committee and the Conservation Commission on an agricultural reuse of. reuse of Griffins Farm. He pushed Abington Cam to move forward with its corporate and nonprofit status and its financial filings as required under state law and in the operating agreement with the cable companies. The two budgets proposed by Mr. D'Agostino since he began as town manager have been worked on with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and the budgets have been presented to town meeting with a consensus of both boards as well as the school committee. Mr. D'Agostino proposed and has overseen the upgrade and improvement of the town's financial software. He has overseen the implementation of the town's website, which for all intents and purposes was nonexistent prior to his arrival. As a result of Mr. D'Agostino's recommendation, the Board of Selectmen solicited proposals for town council, went through a very open and transparent process of interviewing applicants, and entered into a much better fee agreement for the town's legal services. Mr. D'Agostino instituted regular finance team meetings with the town manager, assistant town manager, treasurer-collector, town accountant, deputy assessor, and a school department representative to bring those critical departments together so that the financial condition of the town could be determined much more effectively than in the past. I understand that Mr. D'Agostino has also had issues with some members of certain boards and some elected officials. Some of these were not necessary, but in my opinion, some were unavoidable. As we all know, it is difficult to bring change to any organization or group. One of the reasons Mr. D'Agostino was selected as a finalist by the Town Manager Search Committee and ultimately chosen by the Board of Selectmen was to bring some needed changes and new ideas to Abington. The board knew it would take a strong-willed person to bring these changes. Mr. D'Agostino, sometimes to a fault, is such a person, but he has also produced results. In bringing about change, it was inevitable that some feathers were going to be ruffled and some people were going to be put off. Again, perhaps that could have been avoided in some cases, but I don't think it was possible in all cases. In the end, Mr. D'Agostino, in my opinion, has worked towards implementing needed changes for the best interests of the 15,000 residents of Abington. If Mr. D'Agostino isn't reappointed, and again, my hope is that he will be, I would like to see him make a concerted effort to sit with all committees and boards on at least an annual basis to discuss the issues facing the town and each particular board. That was one of the goals and objectives we initially set out for him two years ago. I would also like to see him contemplate a bit more on what he has written before he sends it out in an email. That has been a concern of the board and has been pointed out to him in his annual review. I believe that with the major issues that we are facing in the immediate future, such as the renovation or building of a school building, the capping of the town dump, the reuse plan for Griffins Dairy, the impending fiscal cliff being faced by the school department next year, and our own ongoing tight town budget, it makes sense to have a professional with a proven track record in the position of town manager. We have that person working for the town now. In the end, we all have to do what we think is in the overall best interests of the town in making our decision here tonight. I believe that the best interests of the town call for the reappointment of Mr. D'Agostino, and I would move to reappoint him for a term of three years beginning April 27, 2013, and ending April 26, 2016, contingent upon the negotiation of a mutually agreeable contract. That would be my motion. Is there a second? No second, okay. Any other motions or any other discussion? Kevin?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I think we need no go back any further than this past June. When we sat with the town manager, at that point in time, the board expressed our displeasure in terms of the working harmoniously with other town boards and committees and the, as you point out in your comments, the email responses that he has done on that particular issue. I think at that point in time, we made it abundantly clear that we wanted things to change. I was willing at that point, as I said, that if things changed, I'd wipe the slate clean, we'd go forward, and you know, it would be my hope that we could go work towards a renewal. Sadly, that has not happened. We only need point to events of the last couple of weeks where we're right back at it again. And the position of town manager or town administrator or anybody that sits in that position, you're supposed to be there to solve problems, you're not there to create problems. And I do understand the position, you know, and sometimes you have to make decisions that are going to create, that people are going to be against. But there's ways of doing that. You can affect your change without being antagonistic. You can affect your change and get your point across, and people understand that, okay, well, maybe, you know, there's two sides to every story. Unfortunately, that has not happened. My position is going to be, and I'm going to make a motion, that we notify the town manager that we will not, and the motion is that we will not renew his contract effective expiration on April 26, 2013, for the issue of non-feasance. And non-feasance is the failure to work in harmony and respect with the other town's boards and committees. And I regrettably make that motion. I was hoping I was going to come here tonight after, you know, having had the chance to work with him in the past, as I said, back in June. He has done a lot of good things, but unfortunately, he's dragged people across the hotbed of calls to get there. And at this stage of the game, I'm sorry, but in my opinion, I don't feel as though we can continue, and that is my motion.
So it will be, actually, I think you should be using the word reappoint, Kevin.
Reappoint, yes, I'm sorry. The motion is not to reappoint the town manager when the contract expires April 26, 2013, with the issue of non-feasance, which is the failure to work in harmony and respect with the other town boards and committees.
Is there a motion? Is there a second to that motion? And there's a second by Mr. Deion. Any discussion on the motion or questions?
If I get this right, if your motion prevails, then we don't owe him three months severance pay.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to speak to that. Along with you, Andy, I have very, very mixed feelings about this whole situation. I think it's somewhat troubling to me because I have watched this town, have been involved in this town, and went through years of really not going anywhere and spinning our wheels. Just like a big race car, we got all raced up and just sat in the start box, didn't go anywhere. And then we did get Mr. D'Agostino, and I have to give the man credit. I think he's done a tremendous job on a lot of issues. I do agree with you, there was a lot that, you know, shouldn't have been there. I do think for the most part that Mr. D'Agostino worked well with boards and committees, the school committee and stuff like that. I think we had some issues in the recent past with, like Mr. Burmind said, with ruffling some feathers of some boards and stuff like that. I would, I would hope, I am going to vote not to reappoint Mr. D'Agostino. I've already spoken to the gentleman, and, but I would not support your motion. I think, if anything, let me just say this. We did give Mr. D'Agostino glowing reports, glowing reports, job performance reviews. And we never did really exercise any option of increasing his salary. And so now we're sitting there, we had some that I acknowledge, is trying to be, I try to be fair, and I'm saying, I acknowledge that we probably should have done something. There were some issues there where, there's a lot of different issues, but we didn't. So now we're going to say, okay, we're going to keep it the same salary for three years, acknowledge you've done a great job. We have some issues, like I say, I think going forward, as I spoke to John, probably isn't a good fit right now in this town. But no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't encourage that. I think you're going to end up in litigation, it's probably going to cost you more. We saw what happened to the sewer superintendent. $900,000 later, somebody went to the bank. And out of principle, I just won't support it.
Any other comments on Kevin's motion?
I agree with what Andy said, and I agree with what Kevin said, and he's been a great town manager, but I can't continue to overlook the things that have been going on since, I call it a probation period since we last talked about his contract. Things haven't appeared to have gotten any better. Also the fact that, I mean, we're not talking about it now, we talked about it back in June, but I sincerely feel that the town manager violated his contract by going outside of the town to apply for another job. So I don't see that as one of the seven reasons, however, I think it might be actions in direct contradiction with the express policies of the board of selectmen because signed contract with the board of selectmen, I think, is a policy. I'm not positive, I mean, we can ask our council about that, but I would agree with Kevin's motion. I just don't think right now that the current town manager is a good fit for the town, and the less I say, the better off I think we're going to be.
Any other questions, comments? Tom?
Yeah, Andy, thank you. Again, what I try to do, like yourself, is to try to be objective by looking at the letter that Mr. D'Agostino sent to the board on June 29th, reviewing his progress, and I also took a look as the board members received his performance evaluation form that he provided to the committee on July 9th. But really, my observations are based on since I got elected to the board on April 29th. And I think like most people either sitting at this table or in the audience or at home, I think there's been a lot of positive things that John has affected in this town. One of the most recent ones is, I think, the rehab grant that I participated with John this past week that helps elderly stay in their homes. But I feel there's this systemic problem that I was hoping would be resolved and John would change, but it hasn't. I feel that he has a problem developing and maintaining positive professional relationships with other boards and committees, many of which are essential to the proper operation of the town. And to sum it up, I just feel he cannot seem to avoid unnecessary controversy. I think a lot of these could have been avoided, you know, and somehow we just don't seem to be able to get there. The other thing that I feel is, I think as our chief executive officer for this corporation we call Abington, I don't always feel both in my time on the board that he acts with the composure and attitude appropriate for an executive position. And I'm not quite sure how willing John is to adapt to any direction or suggestion that he receives from this board. I do agree with my other board members. I think for this town that the fit is not there, and therefore I can't support reappointment at this point.
Just one comment on your, the board of selectmen is the chief executive officer of the town.
I'm sorry, well, CEO, you know.
Chief financial officer, chief operating officer, well, the chief executive officer. So just so everybody is aware, if Kevin's motion prevails, Mr. D'Agostino will not be reappointed, and he will not be eligible to receive his 90-day severance. So that's the motion that's on the floor, it's been seconded, so that's the motion that we'll be voting on. And I don't know if anybody has any questions on that or?
I just want to make sure I understood what Mr. Hardnett stated, that what's on the table from a legal litigation viewpoint is the amount of the severance if we go down this path?
Yes, that's correct. If you vote not to reappoint, there will be no reappointment, and the dispute will be over whether or not Mr. D'Agostino is entitled to the 90-day severance.
No more, no less. Thank you.
And the other option would be to not reappoint and not give a reason, and at that point in time, he would be entitled to his 90-day severance. But the motion, again, that's on the floor right now, is not to reappoint Mr. D'Agostino because of the issue of non-feasance. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Item number two on the agenda is the approval of minutes, October 3, 2012, open session, and October 15, 2012, open session. Motion?
I make the motion to accept the minutes presented of October 3.
I've got to abstain from October 3.
Let's do it separately. Tom's motion to accept the October 3 minutes, is there a second?
Second.
A second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
October 15, open session?
Move, we approve.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, discussion on adoption of the website advertising policy. John?
Mr. Chairman, this, I think, has been on the agenda before.
It has.
So I think it's, a reason why it wasn't acted on last time, it was that it was presented for this town. I have not received any comments from any member of the board regarding any changes to policy, so I'm assuming that the policy is good as it is written. Kim Lester, changes now.
Can I just ask a question? This policy of allowing the advertisement, like certain being, I go onto all of a sudden, it'll pop this thing right in front of you, you can't do any business. Is it going to be something you'd have to, no thanks, don't show me again type thing, or is it going to be off to the side?
I don't.
Yeah, I can answer that, actually. It won't be an annoying pop-up, it will be off to the side.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. I mean, they annoy me, too, the ones.
Oh, I know.
I get annoyed.
Tom? Has that council looked at this language at all, John?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this is inclusive of council's comments.
Because again, I'll give you a kind of, for instance, here, let me, I guess, let me ask it this way. Does this give us the ability, regardless of what somebody would potentially want to put up, that this board, your office, has the right to reject it? No questions asked?
That's right.
Or does it have to be, because I, it just struck me, where we have conditions A through L, what if something falls within there? And I'll give you a weird example, but tomorrow, there's a ballot question to legalize marijuana. Okay? It's kind of ridiculous, but I mean, is that something that if we, you know, didn't want to put that on the website, would we have the ability to do that?
No, you don't have the ability to put political.
It wouldn't be political, it'd be somebody would set up a storefront in some town to, yeah.
I think the last line for you, Mr. Chairman.
How likely do you think that is?
Well, it's probably not likely, but I mean, there could be other situations.
The last line says, including all advertising copy or content must be submitted to the board of selectmen as designated for approval.
Thank you.
And then in the first paragraph, under intent, it also refers to the town to preserve its full rights and discretion for strict access to town's website and to reject or refuse placement.
The other question I have, is this a passive sort of a thing, or is somebody going to be out actively trying to sell ads?
No, we're not going to.
But you could put a block on the website that says your business could be here, right?
Correct, exactly.
We've had about 226,000 hits in the last year.
You said Plymouth has similar policy.
Yes, very similar.
It's implemented the same sort of a thing.
That's right.
I don't anticipate we're going to get a lot of revenue, but, you know, every little bit helps.
Anything else? Are there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
No second.
A second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have. For discussion on special town meeting articles for November 14, 2012.
We have already reviewed the.
Yeah, I don't worry.
But what you have is what's going to go to town meeting, which would show the backup information about the free cash certification, how that free cash is breaking out and being spent. It'll be in a booklet form, as well as the language to the contracts, which is something that the board wanted to see when it goes to town meeting, so that people know what they're voting on when they vote for a particular memory in the contract.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the only article we have not voted on, if my memory serves me, is Article 17. I think we've caught everybody, every other one of them, I think.
I think you deferred that one.
We did, because we're going to wait to hear back from the bylaw review committee.
Right.
And ask them to come in.
We haven't heard back.
Prior to, but we're going to ask them to come in prior to town meeting, that was, or the special town meeting that was postponed. So maybe we could do that again and ask them to come in.
You want them to come in, obviously, the 14th?
On the 14th, yeah.
Okay.
So we have a meeting at 6:00 or so on the 14th?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions or discussion on the special town meeting?
Nope.
Articles, the article, I'm sorry, item number five, town manager report. John?
At this point, I have nothing.
I understand. Number six, public comment, anybody here with any public comment? No public comment. Executive session, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of strategies pertaining to the fiscal year 2013, fiscal year 2014, and fiscal year 2015, memorandum of agreement from the AFSMI Highway Sewer Park and Recreation Union, and not to reconvene to open session. Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. I roll call vote, Tom?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
We will not reconvene. Thank you.